The ponies are a little finicky, I hope you'll keep that in mind in the voting booth. Hi, hello, Rochester! What do we want?
Our ponies!
When do we want them?
Now!
What are we gonna do when we get them?
Ride them!
Where are we gonna get them from?
You!
What are you gonna name yours?
Terrence!
Cool. Greetings citizens, my name is Vermin Supreme. I am a friendly fascist and I am a tyrant that you can't trust and you should let me run your life because I know what is best for you. Yes, I'm a politician and I will promise you anything your little heart desires because you are my constituents, because you are the informed voting public and because I have no intention of keeping any promise that I made. So this election year, please, vote early, vote often, and remember, a vote for Vermin Supreme is indeed a vote completely thrown away. Thank you. Now friends, gingivitis has been eroding the gum line of this great nation of ours for long enough and must be stopped. For too long, this great country of ours has been suffering a great moral and oral decay, in spirit and in size. A country's future depends on its ability to fight back. We can no longer be nation denture. So, please, won't you join me as we bite the bullet and brace ourselves as we cross over the bridge work into the 23rd century? May we become a sea of shiny, smiling, shiny, smiling, shiny, smiling, smiling, shiny, shiny, smiling, smiling, shiny, smiling, shiny, smiling, shiny, smiling, shiny, smiling, 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 shiny, shiny, shiny sea. Thank you. Now friends, do not be fooled by false teeth prophets. What this mandatory tooth brushing law is really about is not the secret dental police kicking down your door at 3:00 AM to make sure you have brushed. No friends, it is not. It is not about the government-issued toothpaste containing an addictive yet harmless substance. No friends, it is not about the dental reeducation centers, it is not about the preventive dental maintenance detection facilities, it is not even about the DNA gene splicing to break a race of winged monkeys to act as tooth bearing enforcer. No friends, it is not about any of those things. The fact of the matter is this mandatory tooth brushing law is all about strong teeth for a strong America. Thank you. Now friends, some of you may be familiar with those particular stump speeches. Anybody here? Because I did get a little famous on the internet, four years ago, I was invited to the lesser-known candidates debate at St. Anthony's College. It's a wonderful event. Since 1972, they've been giving people the opportunity who are on the ballot here in New Hampshire who have not appeared in a national or otherwise debate, and it really gives people a forum that would not normally have a chance. As a matter of fact, I think it's clearly a good thing to point out that at any given moment, right now, right here, there are over a thousand people, I mean, not in this room, of course, but in America today, there are over a thousand people who are running for president of America. It's a very simple thing to do and it's one of the most beautiful things about America is that it's a self-declaration. Anybody here in this room can run for president simply by saying the magic words, "I'm running for president." And so I've taken advantage of this little fact of the world for over 20 years now. I've been coming up to the New Hampshire primary, once again, of course, because it's ground zero, if you will, for presidential election. It's where it all begins, as you very well know. It draws in media from around the world, it draws in media from all across the country and political discourse and all these things. And so I've been utilizing this particular format in order to further my agenda. Once again, I'm just a citizen of this great country of ours and I have my own opinions and messages and if I were to tell you those opinions and messages, what I really felt, and if I wasn't wearing a boot, if I was wearing a regular suit, if I was on the street corner giving you my opinion, I don't think you'd really care and I don't think America would particularly care and it would just be another crank on the corner saying their piece. But I have managed to use some very simple, elegant and effective items in my campaign. I wear a boot on my head, it's so simple. Once again, it's very simple.
Yeah!
And yet, it's very effective. I've talked about using a toothbrush as a toothbrush, something that every person owns, something that every person has, they're intimate with a ball, with a toothbrush, it's in their mouth every day. And I took this, a toothbrush, and I talked about making toothbrush a law. Just looking up these two simple things, but it resonates, people get it. The ponies, free ponies for all Americans, people get it. It's a federal pony identification system. You must have your pony with you at all times. So I'm able to address my issues by utilizing these rather absurdist tactics and this is what has broken through the barrier, this is what has broken through the media. I mean, I've essentially been using a lot of the same material for over 20 years, but the people respond to it, they like it, it's wack. But four years ago, like I was talking about the lesser-known presidents forum, I was invited because I was on the ballot. Anybody who is on the ballot is invited to participate in this event. In 2008, I was on the ballot and I was invited to attend and I was ready to attend, but I was unprepared as to what I would actually say I was gonna win. Me and my wife Becky, Becky, where are you Becky? Nah, she's around, she's seen it all before.
Woo!
She's around here. But anyway, we were on our way up to the president's debate in 2008 and there was a blizzard, a great blizzard, and we were forced to pull over and spend the night on the roadside and so we did not make it to the debate that year. I was disappointed, but between that time, 2008, and, oh, there she is, there she is! I was just talking about driving up to the debate in 2008, getting pulled out of the blizzard, didn't allow us to get there. So it was very interesting because that was Obama's, you know, that's when he got elected. So, in between 2008 and 2012, a lot of different things happened. Essentially, the digital migration of all the media to the internet, that happened. The whole internet culture became a real thing. The Harry Potter's movie became a thing, the meme of the wizard became a thing. You know, for many years, I was just a young kid with a red beard, I mean, running and talking stuff on the street and people were, it was very easy for people to say, "That guy's crazy." But in the meantime, because I've become more gray, that allowed a certain bravado to be implied. The fact that four years passed from the 2008 Obama getting elected election, that gave people four years to get disillusioned and disgusted and disappointed because I find that every year. I've been coming here since 92 and every year, you see all these bright, shiny kids who are really getting involved in this candidate or that candidate and they really think it's gonna make a huge difference and I always tell them, "Come back in four years and talk to me." So there was a certain amount of disillusionment that occurred and of course, that's always been part of my voting block, disillusion, the disaffected, the disgusted, the disappointed. So there's more people like that. And so all these things came together in 2012. I didn't know it, I became a meme. I guess I should've seen it coming, I should've been prepared for it, but I was not prepared for it. And so in 2012, at the lesser-known candidate debate, I opened with the mandatory tooth brushing law speech. It was very unusual, something that people weren't ready for, that I had the boot on my head, people weren't ready for that. It was aired on C-SPAN, it was very confusing for people. It turned into this, once again, it was absurd, it was ridiculous, it was unusual. The thing I like about the boot is that I can stand in the middle of any crowd, have my picture taken and you could show it to a kid, any kid, and say, "What is wrong with this picture?" And they'll say, "The guy has a boot on his head." So it's a signal that what I'm gonna present to you might not be perceived as, you know, correct. In fact, on the Highlights magazine, does anybody remember Highlights magazine? I had the honor of 2012, I was drawn in a cartoon in the 2012 back cover of Highlights magazine entitled, "What's Wrong With This Picture?" I was one of the pink scum of the picture. So, also, in 2012, running for president of America on the Democratic ticket was a gentleman named Randall Terry, an anti-homosexual, anti-abortion activist who I found rather reprehensible. He disowned his own gay son, he did horrible things with Operation Rescue, he was known to throw human fetuses to get his point across. And he was running for president on the Democratic ticket in order to embarrass Obama and in order to say he was running for president so he could run his graphic mangled fetus anti-abortion commercials during the Super Bowl. Everybody has a reason for running, that was his. And so during this debate, I was seated next to him, alphabetically, Supreme and Terry, right there. And during the debate, I was giving him some very dirty looks, I was mimicking him, I was letting my displeasure be known in a fairly non-verbal fashion, but then during the closing statements, I was asked to give a 30-second closing statement and I whipped this up and feel free to sing along. My name is Vermin, my name is Vermin, Vermin, Vermin Supreme. My name is Vermin, my name is Vermin, my name is Vermin, Vermin, Vermin Supreme. And you can vote, and you can vote, and you can vote for president, if you want to, and my name is, and I pretended to get a little flustered and then I said, "Oh, and one more thing," and I sort of sat down and they thought that that was the end of it, but then I said, "Oh, and one more thing," and I claimed that Jesus told me to make Randall Terry gay and I stood up and I proceeded to dump tons and tons and tons of glitter on his head and on his shoulders and on his body and I sort of did it, I put him in an untenable position essentially. I pretty much owned him because he had very, very limited options, you know, what can you do when you're sitting there? I went for, somebody's dumping glitter on you, you can get up and leave, you can get up and swing on the person doing this, you know, there's very limited options, but his option that he chose, which I think was the right one, under the circumstances, was he remained seated and took it. Took all this glitter and, you know, the moderator was, you know, trying to get it to stop and then we sat down and I continued to throw glitter in his direction, it was pretty wild. And afterwards, he was okay with it, we shook hands and, you know, he was a real good sport, a very polite man, he's got a very great sense of humor, I disagree with him greatly, but he sort of get along, okay? And so I did this and it went viral on the internet and it got super famous and millions hit and then people, all the bronies started loving it, the people who loved the My Little Pony series and they all started making crazy drawings of me and artwork and then they started making songs with my voice and all these things and... And yeah, a shout-out to the bronies. And, you know, nothing but love came from it, nothing but this amplified love. I mean, I became very well-known, I'd walk in any street in America and have the boot on my head, people would come up and know me. I can go to any college campus in America today with a boot on my head, people come up and know me and they like me, they appreciate me and so it's been nothing but love, even from Randall Terry. So recently, I know every four years, they have this lesser-known candidate debate and I was very excited about this because, you know, it was my forum, you know, this is a national forum, I think it's gonna be covered by ABC this go-round and I was very excited. I was waiting for my invitation because I qualified to be in it as giving my money for the ballot. And I finally found out through the press, through the press no less, Dan Toomey had this little bit and said, "Vermin Supreme is not coming to the debate because Neil Levesque, the executive director of the National Institute of Politics, said that unless he, yeah, he can come in debate if he pays the $250 for the cleaning bill." Okay, that was four years ago, I never got no bill, I'm sorry. So, I heard this and I figured, well, that's fine, I'll do a little online fundraising, so I put it out there and people contributed and donated and I had $250 cash money and I went up there yesterday and I went up there to give him that money, that $250 cleaning fee because I'm more than happy to do that if that's the way, if I gotta pay to play, that's fine. You know, it's a private institution, I'm not complaining about any lack, you know, free speech or censorship, it's their party, they wanna invite me, they can. So I went up there and he refused my money, he used the word property damage repeatedly, he used the words, "There must be consequences for this property damage." I groveled, I was on one knee, I was clearly groveling, I told him I'm groveling. I was gonna kiss his feet, but I thought better of it, I wasn't gonna grovel that far because I had a feeling his mind was made up. So, I tried to give him money and he would not take the money, he would not accept the money and he said that, once again, that the main thing, one of the main reasons that he gave was that the poor people who had to clean up the mess, they only received minimum wage and they were in fear. They were fearful that they would get fired if they didn't clean up all the glitter. So essentially, the chaplain was telling me that their janitorial staff does not make a living wage and they live under fearful conditions. That was my takeaway, thank you very much. So today, and I asked him when I was leaving, it's like, "Well, can I sit in the audience? Can I attend the event in the audiences as an observer?" And he said he was gonna get back to me today about that through email, he sent me an email, told me that I would not be allowed to participate in the debate, I was not welcome inside the New Hampshire Institute of Poli, New Hampshire Institute of Politics building during the debate, but they invited me, but you are invited to stand outside with other supporters in the pre-designated area and you must obey all college rules and GOSDOM police rules and all that stuff. So I'd like to invite you all to a little demonstration that we're having outside of the New Hampshire Political Library on this Tuesday, this Tuesday, about 5 o'clock, let's say, we'll go and I'll be there. So that's pretty funny, I'm not complaining, you know, don't do the crime if you can't do the time, like I'm saying, but it's just a little thing, I like just funny sometimes like that. But enough about me, I'd like to do a little reading, if I may, everybody okay with that? Okay, this is a speech that essentially was the rough speech that I was going to open with, this was my two-minute opening statement for the New Hampshire lesser-known candidate debate and it would've sounded like this. "The road to Ponytopia will not be easy. There will be many hardships. There will be sacrifices. The transition times will be tumultuous and uncertain. Not all of us will make it. Yes, the transition to a full, stable, pony-based economy will not be easy. The path will be rocky and perilous, but it will be paved with the glitter-encrusted skulls of our vanquished foes. Yes, friends, voluntary mandated pony ownership may be resisted by some. Pockets of resistance can be expected. It may come down to the hooves and the hooves nots. Friends, there will be some naysayers, pony haters in the beginning, there will be those that scream, 'Big government!' These malcontents will be dealt with swiftly and harshly. Many pundits will argue that it will never work. They will be sent to the work camps to be shown otherwise. They are impediments on the way to the new utopia. They are examples of the dangers of old thinking. They are speed bumps in a world that has no need for speed bumps anymore. To create a new world almond, you must break a few eggs. Friends, the switch to a pony-based economy will revolutionize the way America does business. Ponies will create American jobs. Ponies will revitalize America. Ponies are a green transportation solution. Ponies produce usable methane gas, they will lower our dependence on foreign oil, they are a source of abundant pony-based fertilizer, am I right? Ponies are the future of America. Ponies have little, tiny carbon footprints on the environment. Ponies are a renewable resource. They are recyclable, they are cute, they are delicious, they are low in cholesterol. In summation, friends, free ponies for everyone, no new taxes, and economic prosperity for all. Thank you." Now I'd like to read a short piece that is from the future, it's from my future fanfiction that I've written, it's about life, way after my presidency, after I've been elected, all my policies are implemented and what a horrible place it's to be and why you should not get me elected. So here we go, are you ready? Okay. "There were harsh political realities when President for Life, Vermin the First, took office. At the time of his ascent to the White House, there were over 300 million Americans in America's previous borders. At the time, there were only 300,000 ponies in the whole country. It was a recipe for civil unrest. These were not just political realities, these were reality realities. There was a very stark choice to be made on the table. Would it be the mass execution of some 299, 700,000 Americans in order to achieve proper human pony parity or would it be something else? Now, it is certainly true that such a mass execution would create jobs, it would also lessen the country's dependence on foreign oil, it would be good for the environment. Although, there were some drawbacks to consider. Mostly, they were merely questions of ethics and public relations. During this time of widespread civil unrest, all options were on the table. The dental high command was put on high alert, the dental reeducation camps were ready, Homeland Dental Security coordinated with the nation's dental police departments. The militarization of America's dental police forces had been a great idea that was about to pay off in lower incidences of gum disease nationwide. There were riots in the streets of numerous cities. Pulse-aiding water-pick cannons knocked rioters off their feet and knocked the plaque right off of their teeth. The population was demanding their ponies, ponies that were nowhere in sight. It was a time of heightened international tension. No one would have blamed Tyrant Supreme if he had ordered the National Dental Guard to carry out a full-scale massacre of the civilian population. It was high time, actually. The veneer of civility that had protected Americans from such real political unrest for quite some time was wearing thin. The quaint and often repeated notion that it can't happen here was truly just a lack of imagination. It did not help at all that recently-installed dictator forever Vermin Supreme was completely and utterly insane. Thank you." Okay, we're gonna open up to questions, anybody have any questions?
Mr. Supreme!
Yes, yes, you waving your hand with the suit there.
Mr. Supreme!
Yes, sir.
You're an advocate for a pony-based economy. Mr. Supreme is an advocate for a pony-based economy and I commend you.
Thank you, sir.
At one time, our greenbacks, our money was backed by gold, they called it the gold standard. Now it's backed by nothing. If and when you become president, what commodity do you advocate to back up our money to give it credibility?
Well, that's a very good question, sir, I'm very glad you asked because many people often ask me, "Vermin, is it true that this pony-based economy, you will be using actual ponies as currency?" And friends, I have to say that until we can make them very, very small to fit in our pockets and make change with, probably not. However, and some question whether we will even see our ponies or will they simply, will we receive fiat currency backed by ponies in the Federal Pony Reserve? Let me assure you that you will be getting your ponies. And the thing to understand is that once we have our ponies, then we have equity in our ponies. We can use this equity to borrow against and then we will have established pony credit. Now, once we've established pony credit, then we can start to manipulate financial instruments, we can create pony default swaps, we can create AAA pony bond ratings and once again, of course, I think we can create a tremendous bubble in the economy with pony debt. Now, the thing to understand, of course, is normally, I mean, bubbles are great for the economy when they're going, when they're going, they're great. It's when they explode, that's the problem. So my pony bubble is going to be reinforced and steel-belted and live forever. Thank you, I'm Vermin Supreme. Yes, any other questions? I know we have some members of the press, so feel free to fire away if you like.
You mentioned earlier, you mentioned using zombies to run generators, correct? How do you plan on having, feeding zombies? What do you plan to feed them? Because I always say they're not made for energy.
Well, that's very true, I believe the important thing to understand about zombies is that they are carbon neutral, essentially, they don't produce, I mean, sure, they sting like all hag, but that's why we're gonna give them an urethane, right? All right. I think the important thing about zombies is that, yes, it will be a slow and steady climb, it will, in the beginning times, there will only be like small zombie plants for household use, it'll be very decentralized, one or two zombies in the giant hamster wheel turning you, keeping your television and stuff going. And in order to scale them up, that is where the real trick will be and I believe that will involve implanting electrodes to sort of sync them up to keep them going at the same time because if they're shambling individually, it's very hard on the gears, but once we can get them synchronized, I truly believe that in addition to recreating the dance routine from Michael Jackson's Thriller, I believe that they will also be able to power giant turbines. I see a day when zombie turbines power the nation. And once again, I'd like to take this opportunity to point out that there has never, never been an accidental zombie release from a commercially licensed zombie turbine energy facility. I just wanted, and once again, it's not true of the zombie transport, that's separate, that doesn't mess with you, thank you. I hope that sort of answers your question. Thank you. Yes, anybody else? You, you pony.
What will you do for the ponies?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question because some people have hypothesized, mainly ponies, that my mass pony enslavement program is a ploy to somehow evolve the ponies into super smart ponies that will someday take over the planet and enslave the humans. That's true, but it's gonna take a really long time, so you don't have to worry about it right away. Yes?
If you were to get the nomination on the Democratic side, is there a particular Republican you'd prefer to run against?
Once again, at this rate, I believe that I'm on track to not only crushing Martin O'Malley, but I also believe that, and of course, I've already beaten Pataki, I've already beaten Jindal, and I think there's, and who else did I beat? Graham, I beat Lindsey Graham, who else did I beat?
Walker.
I beat Scott Walker, so I'm pretty much rolling... Oh, and this is a fact, I don't know if you've heard this, this came out yesterday, there, now, people can bet on anything and people also bet on the presidential election. I don't know if it's totally legal in this country, but there are houses, gambling houses in England that take bets on who will be the next president in the US. My odds are currently at 500 to 1. I encourage you all to bet on it and get my odds up a little bit, but yesterday it was reported that my odds are 500 to 1, Rand Paul's are 999 to 1. So there are better odds, but according to the betting community, that I will be your president for Rand Paul. So, once again, it's sort of, it's very interesting how my whimsical campaign tends to cross over into reality and how I am used to slam a lot of the other candidates. Oh, once again, of course, on my way here, two out of the three toll booth collectors knew me, two out of three. Yeah, the one guy said I beat Jeb, he said I had beaten Jeb Bush, I'm not sure, he might've mixed it up with the Rand Paul thing, I don't know. And then, so yeah, and if you were walking down the street with me, if you were here looking here, can you feel the energy, people? Can you feel the momentum? Who's gonna win the election? So what candidate, once again, I think it's who will remain standing, quite frankly. I think in 2012, it was clear that I beat Rick Perry fair and square. I received a higher percentage of the vote on the Democratic slate than he received on the Republican slate. I have a very strong suspicion that I will probably be beating legitimately on the New Hampshire primary ballot, a handful of the other Republican candidates. I don't wanna make any predictions, but there's a few there that, boy, I would certainly love to beat, but, well, they've beaten some of my campaign staff, I'm looking to you, Saint Orms Goons. That was in 2012, Saint Orms Goons attacked some of my campaign workers, it's on video and you can find it on the YouTube like that. Next question, please. Did I answer your question? Yeah, I'm gonna take on Trump, you know, it's gonna be me and Trump. Yes, yes.
With your incoming fascist regime, how will you deal with the ponies rights movement? Deal with a pony person, but situation, will ponies have the right to vote and can I marry my pony?
Well, yes, you can marry your pony. And I'd be happy to perform that ceremony, I'm registered with the university. I'm, uh, registered, uh, with the Universal Life Church. Uh, first, uh, pony personhood, I believe it would very... Be very hard to enslave them, uh, if we granted humans, uh, ponies, uh, humanhood or peoplehood. Uh, I... I understand that it is a debate these days, but it's still on the fringe, so I don't think we have to worry about that anytime soon. Uh, the pony rights people, well, we'll just tear-gas them like any other protesters. Thank you. Yes, anybody else?
Can you talk about how you defeat ISIS?
Uh, once again, of course, uh, ISIS, I've, uh... That's exactly right. With... With ponies. With ponies. With armored ponies. With flying pony drones. With like automatic pony weapons and I.E. pony Ds and like whores and whores of robotic ponies crossing the desert, destroying, searching and destroying every terrorist and an occasional wedding party and probably nine, uh... Uh, I'm gonna try and cut it down. I hear it's about nine civilians to every terrorist killed. I'm gonna try and cut it down to half dozen. Uh, any other questions?
Do you support a two-state solution in Syria?
What are you gonna do for the farmers?
Do you support a two-state solution in Syria?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that raising tide, uh, rises, uh, raises all floating little kid Syrian corpse refugees. Uh, I believe in, uh, that there's plenty of room in this country, plenty of room in this country for, uh, refugee camps. There is like miles and miles. In fact, we have all those FEMA, uh, FEMA concentration camps, and I don't see why we just don't retrofit them, uh, as refugee camps, quite frankly. Uh, I'd like to offer my own Middle East solution. I... I think, uh, there's lots of room in Utah. I think if the Mormons are, uh, up for it, we could probably move the entire state of Israel to it. Uh, maybe we could move the entire state of Palestine to, uh, Arizona. I'm... It's just a thought. I'm just, uh, off the top of my head, anyway. Uh, and so, uh, as many states as it takes. As many states as it is taking, because I'd like to point out that, uh, John Edwards back in the day, he was pointing out that there were two Americas, and I'd like to counter that there are 500 Americans. Thank you, I'm Vermin Supreme. I approve this message. Now, I heard, uh, farms, I... I heard, of course, I mean, it's... It's great to be here on a farm. I mean, farms, if... I like to eat. Number one, I like to eat food. Ain't got no farms, uh, it's gonna be a little difficult. Uh, I'm also, uh, been known to advocate, uh, mandatory victory gardens. That's one of my lesser-known plants, uh, but I believe that, uh, the standard American pays them 15% of their, uh, weekly, uh, income on, uh, on food. I also understand that one-quarter of that food is generally wasted. Uh, so I think there's a lot of room for improvement in, uh, in the food supply and the food distribution, and I believe a lot of that would have to do with the decentralizing it and, uh, having more dependence and, uh, sharing and getting our food from local family farms instead of having to spend, uh, you know, so much money on, uh, gasoline to transport and diesel to transport, uh, apples from Washington State, when we could get our apples right here, even though I heard a whole bunch come from China, too. So, um, yeah, I... I'm all about the farms. I do not like to see, uh, farms and farming communities displaced by condos in suburbia and exurbia. Uh, I think that's a terrible mistake. I believe the, uh, concentration, consolidation, uh, consolidation of, uh, the farmers into giant agribusinesses is, of course, not a great thing. In fact, I had just heard, uh, recently that it... It may or may not be true, but I'll throw it out there, anyway, uh, that Hillary's, uh, campaign manager, or one of Hillary's staff is, uh, is a Monsanto shill. It worked for, uh, for Monsanto. Uh, so, so once again, there's like so much big money involved, it becomes just a whole nother... It's right up there with like private prisons for, for business, and it's... They're commodifying, uh, the basic things that we need to live, and food has been commodified and it's been, uh, cultivated, it's been mixed, and it's been turned into these products that aren't really food. And I think that all these things, uh, they're problems. They're problems, and that's why I personally, as a candidate and as a person, uh, fully support, uh, the local food movement, the, uh, the local farmers movement, and, uh, I'm very appreciative of, uh, of the pony movement. Yes. Hey! Can I hear y'all say, "Hey!"
Hey!
Hey! Hey! What does Ted Rock Farm grow? Thank you.
What's your stance on guns?
Uh, my stance on guns is, "Duck!" Uh, once again, of course, I believe, uh, more... I believe we need more mind control. Mind control is much more effective than, uh, than gun control. Uh, I will say, I will speak, uh, for myself as a real person here, and once again, I'd like to point out that really, uh, for... In terms of my campaign, my own personal opinions, I feel matter very little. I mean, the... How I feel about this issue or that issue in the real world, it doesn't really impact. You know, I mean, I have, uh, a wide range of supporters, from the left, from the right. Uh, I have the, you know, the Occupy Left, the Libertarian Right, and, uh, so I... Sometimes I can't take an actual stance without alienating a whole other constituent block. Uh, so, when I will say, when I was a younger person, when I was much younger, uh, yeah, I was... I was a little knee-jerk. I was a little knee-jerk anti-gun. Didn't like him, didn't get him, didn't think we needed him, blah, blah, blah. However, and once again, this is a... I've become real, a politician. I've become more politic, and part of my, uh, involvement on the, uh, my understanding and the ideas about guns, uh, has come about by my, uh, my constituent base, the Libertarians and the Free State Project and, uh, the folks who, uh, hosted me for a big event we had back in, uh, Labor Day weekend. Uh, they're... They're also gunsmiths, the Shaolin Gun Works, and then they let me shoot guns, and there's a great video of me shooting guns. And, uh, so I can say four-square, I'm against gun violence. I am against mass shooting. Uh, I've always been a pragmatist, and, uh, and I've never wanted to get to the pundit thing, because I don't know if what I think about things really affects things. Uh, you know, I respect my people who like guns, I... And I respect their right to like guns. Uh, it... It's a complex issue. I... I have my Pat, uh, Vermin Supreme answers, uh, but, you know, it's something that I've been trying to come to pistol grip with, if you will. Uh, I, once again, during the, uh, during the New Hampshire primary, uh, of course, you do get to... I went to the State House. I went to the State House to register to, uh, be President of America, and I had this vision for many years. And sometimes I have a vision, and I... I don't know what it... What it... What the political implications are, what it really means, but my vision was to go in with two, uh, long guns crossed on my front, two on my back, one strapped onto each leg. I wanted to look really Rambo-esque, because it's legal to open carry in New Hampshire, it's legal to open carry in the State House. So my... My intent was to go and file for the presidency while I was conducting an open carry. Uh, my... My friends, they did hook me up, they did lend me their guns, so when I went to carry, I had a Mauser Berger pump-action pistol grip shotgun on my back, uh, but I had a flower sticking out of it, and an American flag, and a smiley face tattoo. I had a Glock on my hip, I had a .38 Smith &amp; Wesson duct tape to the outside of my boot, I had two, uh, shotguns in a little golf cart that I was pulling behind me. Uh, and so, I knew I was gonna do this open carry. I had called, uh, and I knew I was gonna be on right before Ben Carson. I... Ben Carson was the last day of filing. He was on at 11:30. I called the State House and said, "I'll be there 11:15." And, uh, so then shortly thereafter, there's, uh, a state trooper called me up, their security detail, uh, and wanted to know if I had any requirements or, or needs, and I explained that, "No, I did not, but I would be doing this open carry." He suggested that I leave it in the car, and I told him it was a more political artistic statement, and he said, "Okay," but he wasn't gonna be in charge, the Secret Service was in charge. And so I went there with all these guns, and, uh, we were invited in by the Historical Commission, and so I was in the State House, uh, I was open carrying, uh, the first part, and they wanted me to take pictures with the, uh, with the time capsule. It was very exciting, it was very nice. Uh, and then when I left there, it was then that, uh, the Secret Service sent me, uh, a diminutive Secret Service, uh, age of woman, I assumed to keep it de-escalatory, and, uh, just asked me to go with her, and I followed her down this aisle, then that, that thing, and then she asked me to disarm. I disarmed, uh, but also they didn't let me... They didn't let me bring in the guns, but they also couldn't let me bring in my big toothbrush, and they did not let me bring in that pony, because they declared it to be a weapon. Uh, so once again, if, you know, when I do these things, uh, you know, that was totally in the script. Then I felt good about it. Becky was very nervous about it. She didn't like the idea of me going to a State House with lots of guns with the Secret Service. Uh, I felt good about it. I didn't... I... What could go wrong?